Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all of those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Donahue. Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Tax Assessors Report for Hearing Date to be held June 5, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B Agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting to be held June 12, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C Agenda for the City Planning Commission Meeting held May 29, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D Tax Assessors Results Report to be held June 12, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one short announcement. This is about Operation Car Vet. It's a car and bike show. It's going to be held at the Circle Drive-In Theater on July 20th. It's going to take place 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Registration starts at 11:00 a.m. And this is, just to give you a little summation, it's, this is going to be a family-friendly car and bike show. Car and bike registrations is only $10. General admission is a voluntary suggested donation of $5. All proceeds benefit the American Legion Post 568 and Veterans Promise of NEPA. There'll be multiple classes. We'll be judged and awarded, including Best in Show, Top 20 Best in Show. And this is going to be a rain or shine event. If you would like more information on this, please give a call to (570) 892-2060. Thank you.
I have one as well. This came from Tom Welby, Chief of Staff for Representative Marty Flynn. It's regarding electronics recycling. Bedrock Technology is hosting an electronics recycling event, including TVs and monitors, this Saturday, June 8th, from 9:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon. It's at the Tech Ridge Center, 50 Alberigi Drive in Jessup. The cost for electronic recycling is $20 for a carload, $40 for a trailer load, or $100 for a business. And this is open to the public. It says residents could team up and take a couple of TVs in one car and pay $20 for the carload versus paying $1.85 per pound at the recycling center.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Les Spindler.
City resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Well, Councilman Perry, I feel bad the result of the election.
Oh, don't feel bad. That's, that's our democracy. That's how it works.
That's all.
There's nothing to feel bad about, but thank you.
But I, I could see it coming because I told you people once before, I said, "You don't do anything to help the taxpayers of this city out." And the rest of you up there, if you don't do, start doing something to help the taxpayers, you're going to have the same fate as Councilman Perry. Because people are fed up, and I'm one of them. I had to go downstairs last week, pay $540 illegal garbage fee. Now, I'm retired now. That's half of what I get a month. Now, how am I going to live for the rest of the month? Pay my bills, buy food. It's, that's people, and I'm not the only, there's many, many people in my shoes. I have to have a part-time job just to make ends meet. You people don't do anything to help. I've been complaining for 17 years about this garbage fee, and you don't do it. That killed me to pay that. Yeah, I got a $60 discount. Whoop-de-doo. It doesn't help me too much. So, if people don't just, if you don't get on the ball, you're going to be out the door the next time you're up for an election. Because the people aren't going to take it anymore. And they just proved it in the election. They want new people up there, hopefully they'll do something. And if they don't, they'll be voted out. Uh, I only have one more thing. The Castle Club, the old restaurant, it's only closed for a year. Why can they only close that for a year? They said the law says they can only close it for a year. Because, you know, when it opens up again, it's just going to be the same thing over and over. That thing should be shut down for good. I don't know what good it is to shut it down for a year. The same people will be back after it opens up again. I don't live by there, so it doesn't affect me, but it does affect the city. I mean, a gentleman was killed. A gentleman lost his life, and all they get is shut down for a year? That's ridiculous. And I think council should send a letter to the DA to push, for it to be closed altogether. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Council. Bob Boles, Scranton. First off, I'd like to express my total displeasure with council for canceling the meeting on Monday night, the night before the election. I think it was a cowardly way to deter people from coming in here and saying what they had to say about a candidate that may have influenced some votes. Maybe Mr. Perry would have been sitting here and would have sufficed. But using the fact that you couldn't put a forum together was the most childish excuse out of a council I've ever heard. You denied the people the right to come here and speak their piece, but you didn't mind having it a couple days later. And alls I could do is say, "Shame on you," because maybe a certain individual would not have made the seat on this council had we been allowed to speak about it the night Wayne, have gone through this agreement?
Yes.
It's a joke with everything they send. There's just so convoluted with confusion.
It's a lot of information.
That there's absolutely no sense. However, we did pay four or five, four and a half million dollars that Basilica used to buy the mall, and it was for 500 parking spaces. Everything after this is consequential, means nothing. This is the additional bible of the sale of that garage. And what I'm asking council to do, bring Basilica in, or whatever it's going to take, or it's going to take a litigation, I want those 500 parking spaces opened up to us, the city residents, because that was our money. Enough of pushing the peas around, Mr. -- I'm sorry. Mr. Goohan, I brought this up to you in the past. You pushed it back to Mr. Evans. We've been pushing this all over the place. Well, we're done pushing it. This guy's buying this building, spending millions here, doing this, doing that. Nobody will push for a reassessment of the taxes on there. Yet we're putting the screws to the people in this city on a daily basis. We have to go in and then go up and get a little voucher? You have four and a half million bucks, plus the money that was paid on the Electric City Garage, to do everything else. When are we going to get our heads out of the sand? You need to push this and designate those 500 spaces that are available to us 24/7. We bought them, we own them, and he has no right to play with them, no matter who he wants to sublet the garage out to. They have to accept the initial lease, period. And Mr. Evans, I'm sure you agree with me, as real estate goes. I've done enough real estate deals to know how you follow things. They're not following the rules here. You need to make this a rule, send them a letter, and let's get it going. We've talked enough about this crap. The other part is, again, is Naug Park. I told you, just don't go with this agreement with Guy Singer. Don't let that authority up there make a decision because it's incompetent. Put in our own damn lights and charge them a fee to park there and have perpetual money come in in here to cover our expenses on a daily basis. But don't let a bunch of incompetent fools up there, just take $10,000 and blow it down the toilet. A one-time deal, and we need people to clean the park? There's volunteers cleaning that park every day. And again, Hinton, he violated the Ethics Commission when he was employed as an employee initially. It doesn't change. The law's the law, and it's for everyone here, and you can't push it around. You're the champion of the Ethics Commission, the ethics rules. Enforce them now. That sale needs to be negated. But credibility back and integrity in this city. Those are one of the others. The other issue I have, and it's going to be a sore spot for everybody, but it's going to come out. Jessica Rothschild, I understand some of you guys endorsed her or backed her. First of all, her taking the seat in this city for the purposes that she wants, and I have all her quotes here. We don't need a queer and a queer nation.
Mr. Boles.
No, no. This is my free speech. No. These are her comments. She made it public. This is a public forum, and she's fighting for a seat on this bench.
But it's just no personal attacks. You could state your piece.
This isn't a personal attack. This is a response to the individual who designated who they are. LBGT or queers, or whatever they want to call themselves, are a separate organization. Everywhere you look, they say, "We're a queer group. We're going to change around how you people think. You must follow our rules, accept what we do." I'm not, I have people that work for me, yet they don't talk about their sexual preference. They're employees. We hire them on their qualifications. She's not running based on her qualification. She's here, oh, she's hoping to influence more young professionals to do the same and influence young members of the LBGT community to seek positions of leadership? You want us now to learn how you have your sexual relationships? Mr. Goohan, you want your young children to have her sit here?
I'm sorry, this is, Mr. Rogan, with all due respect. This is totally out of line.
You don't want to hear the truth. Be damned bad.
I don't see what he's quoting.
No, but this is out of line. I'm sorry.
Listen, you don't want to hear the truth.
This has nothing to do with the agenda or anything related to the city.
Mr. Goohan, you don't want to hear the truth.
Please don't bring my children up either.
This is what's happening to this community, and you act as a leader here. If we allow people like this to come in here and use this forum to try and influence our children and our people.
Thank you, Mr. Boles.
To follow their gay and queer way of life.
Mr. Boles, thank you.
Listen, she has an issue with me. I'm the easiest guy to find. I'll be glad to take her on at any damn forum out there, but we will do everything on the Republican side to see that she doesn't get this damn seat.
Thank you, Mr. Boles.
And it'll be on the benefit of the people of the city, and you guys could keep a blind mind to it. But remember, your children are growing up in this community, too.
Scott Thomas is our next speaker.
I'm Scott Thomas, Chief Executive Officer of the Scranton Public Library. I just want to comment on 5B. The Scranton Public Library Authority was established in 2009, and its job is to hold the deeds for the Albright Memorial Library, the Silkman House, and the Green Ridge Branch. And the library, of course, operates from these places. And back when the authority was established in 2009, there was some controversy about, is it going to, like other authorities, accrue debt? And it has zero debt 10 years later, so we're happy about that. What we have done is, if you go up to the Albright, the exterior's been completely repointed. There's now an elevator in there, and we have completely renovated the interior. And we have plans to do some handicap accessibility for the Nancy K. Holmes Branch and new flooring. And so we have all kinds of plans to take care of these buildings. And this being, the authority helps us to get grants and things like that. So, we appreciate you entertaining here this piece of housekeeping to keep the authority. And while I have you, 7E has to do with a traffic signal at the corner of Green Ridge Street and Wyoming Avenue. Is that just replacing a traffic signal? What's, what's the deal with that one?
Uh, yeah, they're replacing the traffic signal through a multimodal grant with the state.
Okay. We have concerns about the safety of that area. We have a branch right there, and we have folks getting out of cars, going to programs with strollers and things, so that's for another day. We can, you know, talk about some ideas we would have for improving the safety of that intersection. A new traffic light is a good thing, but there's other issues there, too, but I'll save that for another day, so.
And while you're here, I'm just looking at the legislation. It says the scope of this work is to replace the existing traffic signal with a new traffic signal system, including mast arms, vehicular and pedestrian signal heads, video detectors, controller assemblies, signage, and pavement markings. So, I think maybe that's the first step to improve the area, and then if you want to get together with myself and the DPW Director to maybe talk about some other things that we can do.
We would very much like to do that, and that's good news, what you just described. I couldn't tell from the specifications exactly what was going to be there, but that would help because it, trucks go by really quickly, people come around the curve, and you're trying to get your stroller out and stuff, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. Wayne, thank you for coming to Swinging on Vine, as you always do.
Thank you, Joan.
I'm sorry you were sick. Bill, where are the other two of you? Okay, now, you know, this is, put it on your calendar for next year. It's always the last Friday in May every year. In climate weather, we're inside the library; otherwise, we're out having fun on the streets. So, Swinging on Vine lasts Friday in May next year. Speaking of the library, I gave Kathy our, our book sale is coming up, like tomorrow through Sunday, second floor of the Marketplace at Steamtown. We have hardcover and softcover books, adult children's books, audiobooks, DVDs, CDs, $1 to $2. You can't beat the price. So, come and support your local library and the library authority while you're at it. That's coming up. Now, when we last met, what was it, two weeks ago, you passed emergency legislation for amending the collective bargaining agreements with the clerical and DPW unions. And at the time, I asked you, you know, what money was going to be involved in this, and there was no reflection in the backup of the calculations. So, I think, gentlemen, it's time for you to show me the math. Does anybody know for the clerical union and the DPW union what these figures are for the year 2019?
I had, I had asked this question. I wasn't here because I was sick, but, and I can show you this document after the meeting. The business administrator said that their best estimate at this point is $30,159. That will come out of the contingency fund.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll actually have to vote on that, vote on the transfer. So, we should be seeing legislation on that soon.
Now, he says that's an estimate. They should be able to refine that and get exact numbers, because all it is, is the number of employees in Union A.
Well, yeah, they said.
Times hours, times days.
Yeah, when we get the legislation, we'll have the exact amount.
Well, he said this is the best estimate since contributions are based on hours worked, and they cannot foresee who will be off on comp or OT hours.
Okay. All right. So, and also, this can go on beyond 2019, as long as the rehabilitation plan is in effect for the IAM union.
Yeah, it's going to go on.
So, it needs to be factored into the 2020 budget.
It's going to go, as far as I can see, it's going to go on for 10 years, because that's the.
10 years.
Right. That's the rehab period under this plan.
Okay.
So, it's going, the, our contribution rate will increase by 2.5% annually during the rehab period, so it will go up 2.5% every year.
Do we get any clarification on how IAM got into such trouble? Why, you know, they never?
They're.
Are they, is the administration going to try to get more information?
Yeah, there, it's my understanding that, well, number one, this is voluntary, and there's actually a video. I can send it to you on YouTube. I don't remember all the particulars, but the head of the IAM Pension Fund put out a YouTube video explaining everything in great detail. I forget exactly what was in it. It was about 15 minutes long, but I can send that to you, and that really explains pretty much everything.
No, don't send it to me, because I don't keep an internet connection in my apartment.
Okay, well, if you want.
I'm too cheap. I have the money, but I'm too cheap.
Okay. I have a thing here, too, I can show you with some other things.
Good. Do we ever get an answer on the Brunel lawsuit, why the insurance company failed to pay the $245,000?
No, I asked for the denial letter from the insurance company, but we haven't received that yet.
Now, is that going to also come out of contingency funds?
Yeah, that'll have to come out of contingency.
That's going to, we're starting to deplete our contingency funds for 2019.
Well, I think there was, we, there was a big increase, right? I think it was almost a million dollars, so I, I mean, I.
We anticipated some of those cases coming through, so.
What about the $130,000 variance? Did you ever get an answer to that?
No. The last I heard from the business administrator was they were forwarding the request, and then that's the last I heard.
Okey-dokey.
So, we're still waiting on that.
Okay. Well, more questions next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And a couple things that are on my mind. Number one, I'm going to start with thank yous, okay? So, a thank you to the treehouse. It's been completed, and a lot of activity over it going down. I don't know who to thank for it, because it was something that was on my plate and on my list of things that I wanted to see and I spoke about at council, so it was good to see that completed and done. It's different than what I kind of thought, because I could use some more, but I guess you can only do so much with what money you have. But it is walkable, and it's a wonderful, wonderful view of the gorge down there, which is something, as a kid, was a place you weren't supposed to go. So, to see it from up on top and looking down on it, it's really a great thing. So, I can cross that off my list as completed. The next thing that I wanted to get an update on was the street signs. And I know that from my notes, that there is a KS Engineering Incorporated Company that's supposed to be working with it. And I wasn't able to be here, because I go to my Bible studies on Monday night, but one of the things that I heard was that the, there's an intern that's coming, and that the intern's going to be working with Lori. And I'm thinking, hmm, my note says that that intern was supposed to work with this engineering company to be able to put some footage together as to the street signs and things that are missing, and not just in the Hill section, but throughout the city. And this intern was supposed to, that would be a good job for the intern. So, when I heard that and that the intern program was going to start, and that, you know, Lori was going to be in charge of it, I thought, okay, is this going to be on the plan? What is the plan for this intern?
So, the, the street sign project is nearing completion. We just received an email from the DPW that they're purchasing the iPads that the employees in the department are going to be using to, as like a work order tracking mechanism. The training, I think, is going to take place within the next few weeks, and then they're going to wrap that up. And then you should start to see some street signs being replaced. I think their plan, right, the administration's plan right now is to move section by section. I don't know where they're going to start, but they will have all the material and all the data, because this company came in and that's all been put together. So, we don't need anyone to go out and look and see which stop signs or street signs are faded. All that data has been collected. Now, it's just about this, the DPW going out, taking that data, and replacing them by section.
That's excellent news. So, the whole city has been done?
Yes.
Excellent. Excellent. Because one of the things that, along with the street signs, I was looking on the website, the city website, to see if there was a plan for paving the streets. I know there was a lot of money. I'm, I'm no good with money, numbers and things, you know, when it gets over $1,000, you know, that gets, bobbles my head. But there was a plan that was going to be in place for thousands of dollars that was going to be put out there for the city streets to be paved. And I know if you call that number and tell them that you have a pothole, they will come and fix that pothole. They're very good about that. However, you know, there are situations where the whole street needs to be paved, and I thought that was something that was on the agenda. So, like, they put on the company, the city website, when the streets are going to be swept, you know, when the sweep was coming. I was just looking to see if there were going to be a plan like that to put something on the website as to when the streets were going to be paved.
I don't know about that specifically, but I do know that the proposals for engineering services for this year's paving project were open Friday, May 17th. So, there was a few companies that bid on it. The DPW then, and the business administrator has to get together and choose the lowest bidder, whoever they think is the best, and then I think we will vote on that. So, we're, we're just waiting for a decision from the administration, and then I don't know yet, and maybe someone else can speak up if they know, that what streets were chosen yet for this project. I believe we're, we have $900,000 roughly put aside for this paving project. But if you're asking, like, how do you get a street on the list?
Yeah.
You can make that request to us. We could forward it to the DPW, or you can call them directly, or you can call the mayor's office.
Okay, well, the street that I'm so interested in, and I, you have to drive it like this, is going up East Mountain.
Mm-hmm.
Right, Lori? When you go up East Mountain, you know, and I go to visit a friend I have up there, and it's just like a war zone. So, I'm just hoping that maybe that street, you know, going up East Mountain.
East Mountain Road?
Hmm, is it East Mountain?
East Mountain Road.
You know, you, when you drive, you just go. I don't pay too much attention to the signs. I just have one other thing, and, and of course, my C Click Fix project.
Well, it's not going away. It's still, we're still working on that. We have had conversations with the company, so we expect that to be happening this year.
You don't want me to follow you through the grocery store, do you? I see you at the grocery store.
No, absolutely. Keep him coming.
But one, one other thing, and this may not be for here, but I just wanted to congratulate the Scranton School District teacher that's up for the Teacher of the Year Award. That was an excellent article in the paper, and it was just so encouraging to, to see how she handles her classroom and the different things that she does for her classroom. And I thought, I said, "Boy, this is really excellent." You hear so much negative things about the school district. I don't have any kids in the school district, but when you hear so much negative, and then they have a great article like that in the Scranton Times paper, you know, it was excellent. So, kudos to her.
Thank you.
For that. Thank you.
Evening, council. How about this building tonight? To me, she's like a faithful wife that some middle-aged jerk leaves for a 20-year-old Here, this poor building has given its all, all these years, and now that she's past her prime and losing her looks and through no fault of her own, we talk about abandoning her. Let me tell you, no one has ever stood in this place and been more adamant about not spending a dime on downtown than I have, but this is an exception to the rule. This, this building just should be saved. You know, you're talking about, I understand, everybody wants that nice young floozy on Lacoana Avenue instead of keeping this lady and repairing it, but then you have the problem, who in the world in their right mind would buy it after all the exposure that it needs $10 million spent on it? Unless you have some parasite like Jefferson across the street that, and I guarantee you, he'd find the money in Harrisburg to work on this building like he does everything at taxpayers' expense. And I think if he could find it, the city of Scranton could, could find it to start repairs and whatever it needs. All the money thrown away at Lacoana College and the university and every, if you could collect some taxes from some of these deadbeats right downtown here, it'd be a start. It's a good thing I took my high blood pressure pill this morning. And in today's usual all-brown trashy editorial by Mr. McKinnon, he's advocating allowing an out-of-state business to come into what is Scranton's better areas and destroy it with a building full of businesses. I, I guess that's because he doesn't live near Berrywood there. You know, what Scranton doesn't need in a residential area, according to this morning's paper, 69 apartments in that building, a bed and breakfast, 13 offices, a 40-seat restaurant, and to me, one of the worst things would be inside-outside wedding area, and you'd know what would come with that. Drinking and probably churches or no churches, they'd be pushing for a liquor license for all those businesses in that building, and knowing this city, the way things are, they could probably get around every, our laws, just like the mayor did to break, hire Bazzoni and get a liquor license. These outrageous plans can only cause the demise of a. These outrageous plans can only cause the demise of a nice neighborhood. I know Dunmore wouldn't be affected. It's, it's Scranton that would be affected. The houses right around this, this building. And I think by whatever means are legal, this has to be stopped. I don't care what Mr. McKinnon says, how good it is for the city. It is not good for the city. The other half where Dunmore is, I've been there. It's beautiful down there for apartments, but that building doesn't belong to be made into all these businesses right there. There's houses and churches on both sides of it. Thank you. I sure hope the people fight this to the end. And while I think of it, you got to fight this stormwater deal. I never heard of nothing. I ask a real estate man what it would, how big my property is, you're talking, you're not talking about $32, according to him. You're talking about a lot of money with, with all the expenses. This is useless, spending stormwater, wanting us to pay for stormwater. I just don't understand what the hell is going on in this country anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
I finished in time. You proud of me?
Lee Morgan. Well, the first thing I have here is I'm always against authorities of any kind. We've, we've seen what has occurred with the Scranton Sewer Authority, just atrocious things. We've seen what happened to Naught Parkwood Authorities. But you know something? I think there needs to be a lot more discussion in public. I think there should be a, a much larger format on this discussion in regards to 5B and not just what's presented here tonight. I think the residents of the city, I think, deserve to have a complete and total understanding of what's on the table, why it's important to move this legislation through the council, and what the end result of this will be. And I just hope that the council would really think about what it's doing here tonight. It doesn't, by stopping, it doesn't mean you're not gonna agree in the future to do it. But I think that it's time to include the residents in this discussion. And I think it needs to be expanded, not just run through the agenda like so many items that come through this council, because this is not a trivial matter. The other thing I have here is, you know, everyone has the right to freedom to speech. Now, Mr. Bolus got up and presented his opinion on an issue here tonight. And I assume that some of the people on council really didn't care much for it. And, well, everybody's entitled to their opinion. But on that issue, not on this individual, but on, I don't know, the bisexual, lesbian, what, I, I don't know all the, the letters and where they fall, but there was a discussion about that on the radio today and that how a former tennis star, I don't, I don't remember what her name is, but she was very famous at one time and she's married to another woman. So, she has, you know, some, you know, some, some reason to speak about this. And where the country is going right now, all the gender walls are coming down. Women's sports, it's her opinion that women's sports is being destroyed because men are having gender realignment and, and claiming gender confusion and all the sports are being consumed and that the country's in a freefall. And I, Naratilova is the lady's name. I don't, she played tennis. I don't pay much attention to some sports, but, so I, I think this is an issue that really should be looked at in some way because our country is really starting, and, and look at, all my life, people were, and all our lives, since the dawn of time, people have either been gay, homosexual, or, or heterosexual. But, you know, what the politicians have done to our country and the legislation they've passed is really done great harm to our country. And I think that everybody constitutionally has the same rights. So, I'm not opposed to any individual doing what they care to do, as long as it doesn't harm anyone else. And I think that they're entitled to the same rights we have. But I think our legislators are the ones that are really killing us off because they write legislation and they don't understand, understand the parameters of the, of the legislation itself. And it expands beyond the point that they intended because, to be quite honest with you, we just elect a lot of people that have no clue what's going on. And they put a pen to a piece of paper and they think they're intelligent, but the problem is they're not as intelligent as they think they are. Now, on the rain tax, you know, the Scranton Sewer Authority had a plan for the rain tax. They were gonna build retention ponds. But then the council and the mayor and their, and the wisdom that they seem to think they possessed, they divested of the sewer authority. So, you know, let alone that they didn't, you know, maintain the storm collection system for decades and some of the people in the neighborhoods have really felt the brunt of that because they come here continually complaining. So, and, and the other thing is the residents, the election, to me, the last election really didn't mean much because people don't go to the polls informed. They go to the polls misled. There's a difference. And they're looking for change, but if there's gonna be change in this city, the budget definitely has to be cut by at least 30%. And that's just the city budget. And our legislators in Harrisburg have to eliminate all property tax, not school tax only, but all property tax.
I'm Joanne Williams, city resident. I'm speaking here today on behalf, I guess, of the children. And my first point is Naught Park. I was lucky enough to be raised and born, born and raised up by Naught Park, so I'm still living by there. I don't like what Community Medical, Argyle Sinja now is doing with the parking. I was down here months ago and discussed how there's no parking up there. Now, there was a three-hour parking put up there, you know, only three hour, and it was gonna be enforced. It's not enforced.
Joanne, I hate to interrupt you.
Sure.
The parking, the parking lot by the Brooks Mine is open and enforced, correct?
It's not being enforced. I go up there every day.
I, I walk the park every day and I never see any cars in there from.
Well, then, what time are you going at?
Well, I'm there eight, eight-thirty.
In the morning?
Yes, yeah.
Try and go there around 11 to the afternoon. I, I mean, I don't mean to, but what it's becoming is a parking lot for the hospital. I know the big lot down below, I said years ago, should be made for the children, rather it be a skating rink, tennis courts, basketball court, something. And now it comes to my attention that the one pool will not be open this year.
That's correct.
Well, I took my grandson up there a couple of times last year. I don't know how you're gonna get all those people in one pool. You're gonna have a disaster up there. That pool should be fixed. This park, as I remember, was willed by whoever willed it. My grandparents used to tell us to stay a park. We don't do enough for our children here. We're lacking. Also, I'm very happy to hear about Greenridge Street and the lighting and the protection there's gonna be. But what about Pittston and Maple? Let's go back a few years. There was a crossing guard there. A student almost died and I was hurt pretty badly. Nothing's changed there either. And it's not the only intersection.
No, we also.
When are we go?
Pittston Avenue and Orchard Street is another one that we.
Pittston and Maple.
Yeah, I know you're talking.
And the other one down there. I'm not, because I said, it's not the only one. When will we be going to start to have safety for our children? When? There's no lines drawn there. What does it take to have the state or the city go up there, excuse me, and draw lines? We almost lost a student here three years ago.
I agree.
Is that what it's gonna take? I'm not talking to no parking authorities, the Park and Recreations. You people need to talk to them. That's why we elect you. And I'm not talking to the state. Maybe you and the school board need to get together because Scranton High School down there is a mess too. I mean, I worked for the school district in the buildings.
We've had, we've had quite a few frustrating conversations with PennDOT over those intersections and they continue.
Well, I hope you do because our children need a voice.
I agree.
And to end this right now, I hope you really work on keeping Naught Park a park for children. And also last, now, in June, May was Mental Health Month. And I'm telling you, I didn't see anything really in the paper, unless I missed it, I'll apologize, or on the media and the news about mental health. I am pro children all my life and pro mental health. And that's why our children need you people to fight for them, for things for them to do, so they don't get depressed, get anxious, be on the videos, blah, blah, blah. All I'm asking you is to think about our children and also to keep this place the way it is. Let's keep our city the way it is. I love this city and I'm proud to say I come from Scranton, but please don't make these changes. Please fight for, fight for the kids. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, resident. Tim, I'd like to extend my condolences. It wasn't for our.
Well, no one, no one passed away. It, it's okay. It's fine.
Yeah, well, maybe we can even get a write-in ballot. I can write in anybody I want, damn it. Okay, I lost my page here. Oh, okay, once again, I wanna talk about trash. It's time for aggressive collection of the trash fees and it's time that the people that are waging this silly court case just stop. I had 21 years of other people's trash on my lawn, beautiful countryside, but not my lawn, every day on trash day. And every Sunday night, by the way, was march out and start burning trash and it's coming in my window, you know? How dare they complain about my rotten old cigarette habit that I gave up? Once again, on taxes, we have too many tax exempts. And I don't feel that it's their fault, but I feel that the government of the state and the county should be working towards subsidizing for the loss of tax revenues. It's just too much and one after another property has fallen. Once again, there's another place today on Lacoana Avenue in the paper and it just goes on and on and on. And we can't keep going like this. We're well over 35% probably at this time. I'm not gonna complain about a hospital. You sound like a bumpkin if you complain about a university or something. But there and again, what about the poor old widder that's hanging out and counting her $850 a month from Social Security and worked all her lives and certainly it's, should be a consideration too. So, it's time that even if we have to go to federal court to get an interpretation on how much property, exempt property is permissible and acceptable. It should be an average between the towns and not, I, I mean, everybody in a county just thinks that another tax exempt in our city is a great idea and they have low taxes out there or their taxes get spent on what they want. And that's just dandy, but it's not doing anything for us. And there was another article, not quite move-in ready. I hope that someone to apply for a historical grant to restore a historical building actually has to have ownership of the building because we're stalling, we're not, we're sitting on our Diddy box here. And it's very concerning to me. I don't wanna see City Hall moved. And furthermore, the buildings that were proposed really haven't had any engineering assessment to see if they would be proper for a City Hall. And you might find yourself meeting in a broom closet somewhere. It's not acceptable. It's not acceptable. All government business, we paid all this money for equipment, done by two different organizations and, you know, it should be out in the open. It should be out in the open and that's all there is to it. I have to wonder sometimes. My friend Ron here beats up on a certain business manager, but it seems like every time he's involved in something, it's, it's like sell this, sell that. I agree with the sewer plant. We were told that the sewer plant wasn't on the agenda to sell it. And my sewer bill is about $40 a month more than what it was, so that's close to $500 a year more. So, if we had actually been putting that in to the sewer plant, who knows? Maybe we, we could have, could have actually done it by ourselves and, and alone on private public partnerships because after it's built, we'll help you, we'll take care of that for you. Thank you. Have a good night. I guess I'm a damn commie.
Marie Schumacher. I would like to start tonight by thanking the good Lord for giving us a full day of sunshine so that I could actually get my lawn mowed, all of it at the same time. And while I'm thanking, I would like to thank and tip my hat to a, a good and strong man. Last Wednesday, as I was leaving Old Forge to come home, I came down Bernie Avenue and went through a lot of stormwater that had built up along the curbs. And then I got to Pittston Avenue. I went past Davis Street and I thought, oh, I've gone through a lot of these, went off to the left a little bit and it looked as though it was flat. Well, guess what? It wasn't flat. When I got down, it, there was a car ahead of me that was stalled out in the water. I shortly stalled out in the water. And I, actually, I was just joking with the guy, but a guy got out of the car, that first car, and pushed that car out up onto dry land so it could dry out. And I asked him if he wanted a job doing mine and he finished theirs and he came over and he pushed mine out, would not take a penny. His name is Keith, wonderful young man. And I think we were able to help him a little bit on, later on in the day too with, with his car, get home so he could get a friend, but I do wanna thank him. And then a third car came and same thing happened to him and that guy was right there and pushed him out. Now, I seem to recall, Mr. Perry will probably remember, people coming from, I believe it was the 2600 block of Pittston Avenue. I thought that was fixed. That is disaster waiting to happen. That lake before we, before the cars dried out enough to get them started and go again was a true lake and it's expensive. And it's expensive. I think we had started off with two, two fire trucks there. I don't know, I don't think they were able to do anything. And then a fire, a police truck or automobile had to sit down there so nobody else came in. And I, I don't know why those people never came back. I assume that it had been fixed. That is terrible.
What we're not off with that was we had American Water do a pipe sewer purge and clear out the blockages in that area. And that's the first time that we've had a backup in that issue, that area since. And, you know, I contribute that to just the massive, massive amount of rain that, that happened all at the same time. But there hasn't been an issue in that area since, once we were able to, to clean out those pipes and the sewers started working at maximum efficiency.
Okay, thank you. But yeah, I, I think, and, and I think a police car should go out there if we have an extremely heavy thing and see if, a storm and see if it needs to get a police car there to stop traffic. So again, stormwater, we need more than an authority. I am against an authority for the stormwater. I don't think we need it, but what we do need is action. We need action on that road. We need action up on the mountain, East Mountain, West Mountain. And it's, it's far beyond the time that we do something to actually eliminate the stormwater problem and not worry about a creation of another authority. Now, move on to what date has been set for P E L to come in and, and tell us how we're doing with a list of exit recommendations?
We discussed that today. I think we're kind of be scheduling for the 15th, I think? We're trying to? Yeah, June 15th is what we're looking-
June 15th, that'll be in here?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's good. I would also like to ask that we get, ask them to put a five-year plan out for us too and see what it looks like the way we are right now after we potentially exit. And the paving. I, somehow I missed that, that date. But with respect to East Mountain Road, I think P A W C needs to come out and help with that. My little friend and I, you know, had breakfast on the porch every, every morning last summer and we were logging and I can't tell you how many, well, I can if I got out my log, but there were five to seven trucks, big water trucks that came every day. And every 20 minutes, a cycle for the whole day. And all that water and all that weight. And something needs to be done with that road and Seymour Avenue anyway. Because ever since, we got a GPS, it is being used as a bypass to get to 81 by everybody. I can't tell you how many times 53-foot tractor trailers come across Seymour Avenue and go down East Mountain Road. It's terrible. And it's, it's wrecking the roads and it's wrecking our, our life, you know, the backup and back. And if I may, just one more, ask one more thing for today because I'm confused. Regarding the LERTA. I, I looked that up and, and I, it seems to me that what is supposed to be, that people who have the LERTA are still to pay taxes. They're, they pay taxes on the land at 100% and then they, the rest is what they have improved or what they've increased over the time.
That's true.
Now, who decides that? So like, I'm concerned about, for instance, the 200 Adams Avenue, the county annex. So that will remain, they'll be paying-
There'll be no, there'll be no change in that. All they're doing is changing the use. So if they turn that into apartments, then there'll be no change in the assessment. So there's an assessed valuation today and that will continue once it becomes taxable. So there won't be any change in that building whatsoever.
Well, there was a change, there was a LERTA for the Chamber Building. Now, what's the difference?
Which Chamber Building?
The one across, the one where you live.
No, there's, there's, they pay $60,000 a year in taxes.
But I mean, there was a LERTA for that.
Well, I'm not sure if there's a LERTA for it. I, I'm not aware of that because I wasn't in council then, but-
But that, and-
It might have been tax credits, but I don't know-
It's when it's completed that the, and that the tax assessor, if, if you do make an addition.
Yeah, well, it's based on the assessed valuation, of course, but it's, it's the improvement and new construction. So the footprint on the administration building isn't changing. So I don't anticipate the taxes changing in that whatsoever, as long as they're apartments. It shouldn't change.
Okay, well, I was just using that as example of that. So that does stay the same.
But another example would be if, if somebody bought a lot on the corner of Wyoming Avenue and Linden Street and built an entire new building there, the land will continue to be taxed at 100% and only the assessed valuation for the improvement would get the LERTA.
And then, and then that's just that for 10 years?
Yeah, and the county determines that. The Assessment Office determines what the new assessment would be. They establish that when the building is completed and that's what gets done. And then when it comes off, it's already established.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Yeah, I just have, I have a couple quick ones. I was looking at, I mean, we had the one issue about safety and Maple and Pittston. Pittston's just, when, when it's, when it's high traffic time, Pittston's just very difficult, especially with parking on both sides of the streets, it gets very blind. I know we talked about Orchard Street. I know Hickory even, and we talked about Maple. I did take a quick peek at the street view. There is some marked crossing lanes, but they are pretty faded. Especially the ones where the high traffic is on the Pittston side as opposed to the Maple side. It's not our end-all, be-all fix, but if we could have something sent to PennDOT to have that area repainted and maybe even highlighted a little bit better. Make sure there's a school sign there with South Intermediate, four blocks away. That should be, that's a busy road. The parallel street down from that, I believe, is Cedar. There's a light at that intersection which is conducive to safety. But the one there on Pittston Avenue and Maple, that does not. That just features a faded crosswalk right now. So we could definitely use some extra signage and have that paint freshened up. That's, that could be done quite easily, I think. Secondly, there's, I've been dealing and talking with an owner of an establishment about possibly having an issue with their occupancy permit. And they've been going back and forth with the Licensing Inspection Department and they haven't really gotten too many answers that have eased their minds yet. So I told them I, I'd help them be a liaison. So if we could send a letter to the Lips Department. The occupancy permit in question is the business at 3025 Pittston Avenue. It's called The Vape Shop. They had an inspector in there and they said there was an issue with their occupancy license, which I was there. It's, it's hanging on the wall, it's within date. I didn't see any issue with it, but they were confused on what the issue possibly could be. So I told them to ease their mind. We can get an answer sent to us so we can kind of explain that back to them. But they were very concerned because as, as far as they're concerned, they've, they've done everything right and correctly and they've been operating there without issue for quite some time now. And we don't want to see that relationship sour or end with, with the community or the city. So if we could do that, send that out to Mr. Hinton and get the answers back for them. The only other thing I have is I got an email with some pictures of a broken streetlight. The, the streetlight is at the intersection of Kirst Court and Kane. If we can send something out to Department of Public Works. I'll send you also forward on that, the pictures already to, to kind of describe it. It looks like the housing with the wire is that, the box fell. It detached and maybe the elements got to it and that's why the bulb is out. But as of today, the streetlight is still on. I did do a follow-up to see if maybe it triggered a, some kind of alert to have them fix it, but it is not fixed. So if we can get someone on site there. It looks like to me it's going to be just more of a bulb replacement. There might have to be some wiring that needs to be taken care of as well and the housing reestablished. That's, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
A couple of things. I was approached by several residents over the last few weeks specifically to tell me what an excellent job the DPW did during the recent storm, storms. Many times working late into the night and helping residents throughout the city. So that's always very encouraging to hear that they're out there doing a great job. Speaker made a comment about one of the council candidates. I'm sort of still shaking my head about that. But I happen to think that change is good. And differing viewpoints should be encouraged and fostered and listened to, especially in the government sector. So that's all I'll say about that. Stormwater was brought up. The county commissioner has passed a resolution last week that they are against any and all stormwater fees, that they will not support what some politicians like, now like to call the rain tax. Of course, the term rain tax is now the fashionable political soundbite for stormwater fees. So as I stated before many times, addressing stormwater management for the municipalities that have been identified as being mandated to address this issue is something that will have to be done. For many cities and towns up and down the valley, letters and resolutions saying you don't want to do it does not allow you to opt out. It does not allow you to ignore the reality of your situation. That is why I continue to favor a regional approach to this issue to reduce the cost, not only to, for municipalities themselves, but ultimately to the individual property owners as well. But if elected officials want to continue to feel good about themselves by railing against this unfounded mandate, then that's on them. But dealing with this problem is the law of the land. And just because some want to walk away from an opportunity to lead should not mean that we should have to buy into what they are selling. We will never have the local government. We will never have the state government. We will never have the federal government that we want or deserve until elected officials stop making decisions based on the political ramifications of those decisions. This latest example continues to point to the fact that so many of our elected officials continue to view their decision-making processes through a political prism. And somehow, in some way, that has to stop. As my custom weekly, and finally, every day is your chance to make this city a little better. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gawn. Any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. The first comment I'd like to make is regarding 913-915 Einan Street. I had the opportunity last week to meet with multiple neighbors of this area, of this block. And this property at 913-915 Einan Street is, in my opinion, one of the worst that I've seen in person anyways in my five years now on council. The interesting thing about the 900 block of Einan Street that I did not realize is that this house at 913-915 is condemned. There's, I think, in total, four or five condemned homes on this one block. So, you know, the neighbors and I, one neighbor joked that it's literally a nightmare on Einan Street, similar to the movie Nightmare on Elm. The neighbors are literally being held hostage by this one home. The doors have fallen off. One of the doors was boarded up. That has fallen off. I had just been able to peek inside of the home and it is in total disrepair. I'm not an engineer, but it looks to me like it is beyond rehab and beyond any repair. According to one of the neighbors, there was an oil spill at one point in the basement. The city condemned it because of that and told the homeowners they had to have it professionally cleaned up. DEP at some point, I think, was called in. So we're still not sure what happened there. There are holes in the roof. There are rodents, garbage, extensive damage on the outside and the inside. So I had inquired with Mr. Hinton. I would like to note that this property in question has been a problem since at least 2007. So it predates even this administration. Mr. Hinton did reply quickly, which I really appreciate. He said, and I quote, "This property has been tied up in litigation with the courts for years. The property is currently condemned and the city will be going back to the court to ask for relief from the last order so we may proceed with enforcement action." The property was never slated for demolition, at least yet. So I had asked Mrs. Reed, which she did, and I appreciate to send a follow-up to the Law Department of when exactly the city will be going back to court, what this process looks like, what the timeline is. One neighbor, when I was out there last week, was told that Judge Monley at one point gave the owners three months to rehab the property. That never happened. We would also like to know, have the owners ever been in front of the Housing Appeals Board? There's a rumor that they've put a bond, a $10,000 bond up to stave off the condemnation. If so, I'd like to request a copy of those minutes from the Housing Appeals Board. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to send a letter to Mayor Courtright, Licensing and Inspections Director Pat Hinton, and the Law Department Solicitor Escri, asking that the property at 913-915 Einan Street be put on the demolition list as soon as possible.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. This, in my opinion, after, you know, going out and touring the property and the area, this is now a public safety emergency. God forbid this house ever go up in flames. The proximity to other homes on this block is very close. As I mentioned, there apparently is an oil leak in the basement. It's a fire hazard. There have been rodents. And the people that own the home are from Flushing, New York. And apparently they're seen sporadically, you know, to cut the grass once in a blue moon. In fact, some of the neighbors were actually taking care of the property in the back and cutting the grass, which is sad in and of itself. So this motion basically is to ask the, the city administration, when they can, when we find out what, what has to happen through the courts, to put this on a demolition list as soon as possible because the neighbors should not be held hostage any longer.
On the question, I'm just going to touch on something I talked about in caucus. I, I've been asking for the administration to do a top-down review of Lips for probably years. And my recent conversation with the BA is that we're going to get this done. The RFP should be going out shortly to hire a consultant to look at licensing inspections for policy issues, fees, fines, the operation itself. And I think what Councilman Gawn just described is symptomatic of a bigger issue. And the bigger issue is, you know, let's get this right. Let's get it to the department that is functioning at a high level. I'm not blaming anybody that's there now. I just think there's a lot of procedures and policies that need to be addressed and need to be taken care of. And we need to have professionals come in here and look at it from the top down and, and then move on. So that's my only comment.
And the neighbors, when I was speaking with them last week, would like to invite, and I said in the caucus I would provide the contact information, invite any council members and any public officials in the city to come out and view this block and tour this block because it is really unbelievable. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it in its order.
Thank you. I received a request from residents in the 200 block of South Hyde Park Avenue. There's a storm drain completely filled with dirt. It's the only one that works on that side of the street. Every time it rains, the water comes all the way up to the sidewalk. So we did contact DPW and they quickly responded that Pennsylvania American Water Company would send someone out to take care of that issue. Two requests, Mrs. Reed to put the 1300 block of Smith Place, if possible, in West Scranton on the paving list. And also, Mrs. Jeffrey's requested East Mountain Road, if that's possible as well. We actually received good news. We received an email from the Business Administrator that the city received a significant savings from the Commonwealth Discount Car that was used for the city's health insurance. By utilizing the Performance Health Discount Car, the city has saved nearly half a million dollars in healthcare costs from May 1st, 2018 to March 30th, 2019. So kudos to the, the mayor and the administration for going through with that program. Obviously, we've seen a huge benefit from that. Mr. Evans had brought up the meeting that we're going to have with Pell, which we've been having now for the last few years. I think that's really important just to get an update on our progress towards Exiting Act 47, which is coming relatively soon. We did receive, as I mentioned earlier, proposals for engineering services for the paving project that were opened Friday, May 17th. There were several companies that bid and we are waiting on a decision from the administration. I wasn't here last week because I was ill, but I do want to thank, take an opportunity to thank our District Attorney, Mark Powell, and our Chief of Police, Carl Graziano, for taking the necessary steps and working together to temporarily shut down the Castle Club on North Main Avenue in North Scranton. Council sent a letter to that effect May 14th. And the District Attorney and the Chief of Police quickly acted on that and I really appreciate it. We also followed up with our solicitor on possible legislation to have clubs that are BYOB, Bring Your Own Beer, to close down at 2:00 a.m., even if, you know, they don't have a license through the LCB. So we are working on that. Solicitor Menora is continuing to take a look at it. And there will be hopefully a meeting held soon between Solicitor Menora and the city Solicitor Jessica Escri. So I'd like to thank them for their quick action on that. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Just two brief items.
Just two brief items, and I have to double-check. I know East Mountain Road was brought up a couple times. I'm almost positive I saw that road on a list, one of the lists regarding paving. And I do know a lot of the roads up there are going to be paved by the water company, Mulkey, there's a few others that there's work going on that will be paved this year as well. I know we inquired on that a couple times. Just one item I wanted to bring up. We did receive a letter from Northeast Revenue Service. This was on May 29th. It was addressed to the mayor and council was copied on it. I'm not going to read the whole letter, but this is just regarding the delinquent garbage bills that have been a hot topic for quite some time now. Very encouraged with one of the items that's mentioned in this letter, and I'll read this part. It says, "While we will continue to aggressively pursue delinquent accounts through filing liens and our collection procedures, we recommend the Lackawanna County Sheriff's Office conduct sheriff sales of habitual delinquent properties." And then there's an attachment that goes through and gives the breakdown on how this will be handled. They're proposing moving the top 10 delinquent properties to the sheriff's sale, and they're saying that they will pay all the costs associated with moving those properties to the sheriff's sale. I did have a discussion, this was following the caucus that I wasn't able to attend, with a representative from Northeast Revenue, and we did discuss this a little bit. I mentioned at the time, and I still believe this is a very good idea. If we start with the largest offenders, with the sheriff's sales, keep working our way through, I think it will finally be able to put, you know, put this issue to rest and get people to pay their bills. Unfortunately, this is property-specific. So I know some out-of-town landlords that owed very large sums on multiple properties have come through. My understanding is that this will be property by property. So if somebody owes $20,000 on 10 properties, they probably wouldn't be on the top 10 list yet. But somebody who owns maybe a four-unit multi that hasn't paid their garbage bill ever would probably be one of the top offenders. So I think getting this over to, you know, to do a sheriff's sale and look at some other ideas is a good step, and I hope that the mayor will take this recommendation and run with it. I know I fully support it. And there's a number of other items that we discussed in our caucus. We don't agree on all of them, but I think we're having a good conversation on a lot of different items that we can do to receive the money that's owed to us and come up with a better system in the long term, because this current system just doesn't work. You see, the people that just don't want to pay aren't paying, and it's not acceptable. And I think this is a good step, but there's much more that we could be doing.
Can I just add one thing? Sorry. Because this subject is of great public interest, would we be able to, and I'll make a motion, if I have to, to put these, we have two letters from Northeast Revenue Services with a great deal of information in them. So I'd like to make a motion to put the two letters, letter from Northeast Revenue Services to the mayor, May 22nd, and a letter from Elliot Greenleaf regarding Northeast Revenue Service to our solicitor in third order for next week.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so ordered.
And I'd also like to ask, like to make a motion that we put, the mayor sent a letter somehow slipped, I missed it, and I apologize, May 6th, to council in response to a letter that I had sent. I'd like to make a motion that we also put that in third order for next week.
Is there a second?
Well, I'm not, can we talk on the question, or do we have a second?
There has to be a second to talk on the question.
On the question?
The only thing on the question, I'm not sure if a letter directly to a councilman should be on, but, you know, that's open for discussion.
No, I-
The other ones were directed to council, so I didn't know if that was a personal letter to you or not.
No, this was to the council.
Okay.
The only reason I bring that up is because in third order, it does say, "Reports and communications from mayor and heads of department, heads and interested parties and city clerks" notes.
Okay.
And just to reference the letter as well, we had asked about the delinquent refuse collection, and I had asked that the mayor would be interested in reevaluating the contract with NRS, taking a look at different options and different solutions, whether we take out the middleman and bring it in-house, if that was an option that they would be willing to look at. And we did receive a response, says, "With regard to your inquiry on reevaluating and rebidding the city's contract with NRS, the business administrator and treasurer are contemplating this issue further, and the city solicitor is reviewing the contract. With regard to your question on taking a more aggressive approach to collecting delinquent refuse bills, the business administrator and solicitor are evaluating all available options." I mean, I understand what you're saying. If it's like a simple email, we don't have to put it in third order.
Well, no, but I was more concerned it was a personal letter back to you. You know, it's not, it's just, it's the council.
It's to the council, right. And I think maybe we could discuss, just making this a matter of practice, if we do receive a letter from a department head or from the mayor to the council, that we could just put it, automatically put it in third order.
I don't see a need for that. They're all public records anyways, so third order would be 100 items if we put every letter that we received.
No, what I'm saying is just from the mayor. We usually, you know, rarely do we receive correspondence directly from the mayor's office, and if we do, it's, I think it's, usually it's important. So, I mean, just as a matter of practice, just my own personal preference, just to put it in third order, but we can have that discussion.
And I'm for the motion, they're public documents anyways.
Right.
Putting them in third order really serves no purpose, but putting them on there isn't a problem.
The only, the purpose that I see in it is that then it becomes a part of the agenda, and then people can view it online. That would be the only thing.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so ordered.
5B for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 9, 2010, and ordinance repealing file of the council number 95, 2009 as amended, and ordinance entitled Signifying the Intention and Desire of the Council of the City of Scranton to Organize an Authority to be Known as the Scranton Public Library Authority under provisions of the Act of the General Assembly known as the Municipality Authorities Act 53 PACSA 56, setting forth and authorizing execution of Articles of Incorporation, appointing and fixing the terms of the first members of the Board of such authority, and upon organization conveying title to the authority for the properties on which the Albright Memorial Library, the Greenridge Library, and the Silkman House are located, authorizing all other necessary action and repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances, resolutions or parts of resolutions to revive the Scranton Public Library Authority.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes. Sorry. Yes, as was mentioned, this legislation simply rectifies and corrects the dissolution of the authority, or when they try to dissolve the authority on the city's books, as Mr. Thomas had mentioned, the authority continues to operate. It holds a deed to the properties referenced in the ordinance, and they seek and obtain grants. The authority was never terminated with the state, still registered as an authority, so this is mostly to clean the legislation up. And I do want to take this opportunity to thank you for coming to council and, you know, giving us an update on what this legislation actually entailed, and thank you for the great work that you do, and also thank Mr. Finnerty for coming, who did a great job as the executive director as well. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Urban Design Ventures LLC, 212 East 7th Avenue, Homestead, Pennsylvania 15120, to perform a five-year consolidated plan for years 2020 to '24, annual action plan for 2020, and an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice for the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I had requested additional documentation from the second bidder, or from OECD on the second bidder in this, for this legislation. I did receive it from the director of OECD. So I talked about this in the caucus. What I would like to see from the director of OECD is more of an explanation on why they chose this company, only because Urban Design Ventures and their proposal, they're charging or they're willing to negotiate a lump sum not to exceed an amount for three tasks. These are suggested costs that are subject to the final scope of work, but for the 2020 to 2024 five-year consolidated plan, they're going to charge $23,750, or that's their suggested cost. For the annual action plan, they're charging $8,500, and for the 2020 analysis of impediments, they're charging $18,000. And technical assistance, they have several people here listed with hourly rates. The second bid, which was not in the backup documentation, but which I had requested, the other company that bid is only charging $19,000 total. $9,000 for the completion of the five-year consolidated plan, $3,500 for the action plan, and $6,500 for the analysis of fair housing impediments. So I understand that you don't always choose the lowest bidder, but since the amount is so great in this case, in my opinion, I would like to see more of an explanation on why they chose the higher bidder. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction of resolution authorizing reapportment of Michael Burke, 74 Snook Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18505, as a member of the Housing Appeals Review Board for an additional five-year term effective May 16, 2019. Mr. Burke's prior term expired November 24, 2018, and was held over until May 16, 2019. His new term will expire on November 24, 2023.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction of resolution authorizing reapportment of Gerald Smurl, 300 Prospect Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18505, as a member of the Housing Appeals Review Board for an additional five-year term effective May 16, 2019. Mr. Smurl's prior term expired on November 24, 2018, and was held over to May 16, 2019. His new term will expire on November 24, 2023.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction of resolution authorizing appointment of Robert Kuiper, 406 Roanoke Lane, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, to the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Kuiper's effective date will, excuse me, will be May 16, 2019. Mr. Kuiper will be replacing Jeff Mackey, who resigned effective May 14, 2019. Mr. Kuiper's term will expire with the term of Mayor William L. Courtwright.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction of resolution authorizing appointment of Robert Shoemaker, 617 Colfax Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority effective May 16, 2019. Mr. Shoemaker will be replacing Emmanuel Johnson, who resigned May 8, 2019. Mr. Shoemaker will fulfill the unexpired term of Mr. Johnson, whose term is scheduled to expire on December 31, 2022.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6th order, 6A, no business at this time. 7th order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the council number 63, 2019, approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license owned by RDRM Incorporated, HC2 Box 177 Thornhurst Township, Thornhurst, PA 18424-0177, license number R16828, to Giant Food Stores LLC for use at 1600 Naug Avenue, Lackawanna County, Scranton, PA 18509, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn? Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the council number 64, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept on behalf of the city of Scranton this quitclaim deed conveying title to the city of Scranton the property formerly owned by the Lackawanna County Land Bank, known as 100 Block Kaiser Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, as more fully described in Exhibit A attached here too and made a part hereof.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. Two weeks ago, I had asked about, for more information and kind of a background on this piece of legislation, so I just want to read from what the city solicitor had sent. The city, so this project is to fix where the Kaiser Valley Community Center is. They're going to pave grade and correct the pitch of the parking area, to correct poor drainage and remediate current, the current situation during rainfall of water pooling and running into the entrance area and kitchen area of the building. They received some sort of grant money, and I know everyone on council, and for the past five years, this has been a sore spot with the residents in that area. The city is not involved in the actual grant, it was obtained by the county. The city has no involvement and is not providing any funds. The purpose of this legislation, the land where the community center is located, is actually owned by the city. In a review of the plans, it was discovered that a small portion of the land was owned by another person. This piece was on the repository through the Tax Claim Bureau Judicial Tax Sale. The county has tax title. The property was removed from the repository and actually was transferred to the land bank, where the city then acquired the land. There was no cost. The city taking this parcel of land is its only involvement, and obviously, the project and the grant will address the stormwater issues and will provide a fix to some of the problems there as well. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 115, 2019, reapportment of David J. Wenzel, 7 Phillips Drives, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18505, as a member of the Shade Tree Commission for an additional five-year term effective April 24, 2019. Mr. Wenzel's prior term expired on October 29, 2018, and was held over to April 24, 2019. His new term will expire on October 29, 2023.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'd like to thank all the people who are being appointed tonight or reappointed for their commitment to public service and taking the time out of their busy schedule to serve on boards, especially former Mayor Wenzel. Mayor Wenzel is an absolute, he's an unbelievable person, number one, for all that he's done for the city and his service to our country, and number two, for his expertise and the fact that he takes the time out of his schedule and dedicates it to the Shade Tree Commission, which actually in the last few years has done an awful lot with, in addition to Mr. Santoli in the city. So I want to thank him for that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 116, 2019, reapportment of Joseph A. Ricardo Jr., 1002 Fraut Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18505, as a member of the Shade Tree Commission for an additional five-year term effective April 24, 2019. Mr. Ricardo's prior term expired on December 7, 2018, and was held over until April 24, 2019. His new term will expire on December 7, 2023.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, resolution number 117, 2019, authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval, for traffic signal permit number as noted, for traffic signal replacement at Greenwich Street and Wyoming Avenue.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?[1796.98]
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 118, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to grant a special encroachment permit to Crocus Cafe to operate an outdoor cafe at 323 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question?